All right, we're going to call our August Board Meeting to order. We have a declaration of quorum, seven members present. I'd like to welcome you to this meeting with College Station Independent School District's Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda and information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We've just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We're very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. That'll bring us to Item C: Recognitions. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. Board members, tonight, helping us with our pledges and moment of silence, we have a number of students from summer day camp. And here to introduce those students are some of our summer day camp counselors, Joey, Chelsea, and Marley. If you'll come forward and introduce our students, they can join you and then lead us in our pledges and moments of silence. Reduce yourself.
Good evening. I am Joey Tutte. I was the site director at Pebble Creek Elementary for the summer. I'm also a fifth grade math teacher at Pecan Trail. With me this evening, I have Patrick McNeely, sixth grader at Oakwood Intermediate, and Reagan Bays, third grader at Pebble Creek Elementary.
Good evening, and my name is Chelsea Caffey, and I had the pleasure of being one of the assistant site directors for our Spring Creek location this summer. And with me, I have Sosna Tesfamichael and Remy Seeger.
Hi, I'm Marley Trailer. I was one of the assistant site directors as well at Spring Creek Elementary. And, yes.
Good evening, and welcome to the CSISD August Board Meeting. Please stand for the national and state pledges.
Now, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Now for a moment of silence. Thank you.
You don't like those people. They're nice most of the time.
Thank you, guys.
All right, that'll bring us to Item C2. We're going to recognize the artwork there provided by some of our summer day camp campers from this summer. So make sure you see what we had going on this summer because we didn't stop working, and they didn't either. So much appreciative of that. That'll bring us to Item D1, Board Reports. Do we have any?
I do. Education Foundation met last week. Mr. Horak and I were there with a whole slew of the team and really kicked off the new year. The theme this year is the CSISD Nation, kind of a patriotic theme. You might have seen some of the T-shirts last Friday. And they put the mission on the front, and I'm actually going to go real quickly read the mission of the Education Foundation. Just a reminder, our mission is to partner with the community to provide resources that, one, inspire learning and teaching, two, enrich opportunities, and three, recognize the many successes of College Station ISD's teachers and students. And, I mean, it's a wonderful mission. And they're also, with the kickoff of the year, kicking off the fundraising part of the Education Foundation. So, you know, that's the community support side of it. And so any businesses or individuals who want to contribute, you know how to find Teresa or me. And then I guess the other thing to thank the Education Foundation, one of the things that they did was help sponsor the wonderful event last Friday for their convocation. I'm assuming Mr. Martindale will talk more about that. And then also, just a reminder that the teacher grant applications are just opened up, and so those teachers can start working on those, so they can take advantage of some of that money. So, that's it. Did I get it all? All right.
Anything else? All right, Mr. Martindale, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Horak. Ms. McAdams, I hear their fundraising video is exceptional.
That's a good teaser. That's good. That'll get family.
Very good. All right. Thank you. No, superintendent's update. Yes, last Friday, we had the opportunity, as you're all aware, to welcome all of our employees together at Central, over 2,000 folks. And our keynote speaker was George Kuros. And we owe support from our Education Foundation in having George join us. And he did a wonderful job, really left everyone motivated and ready to go. With that being said, I hear tomorrow is the first day of school, so I do need to go on record as to why there's really no principals here, with the exception of Mr. Grimes. He apparently did not get the email. But we did provide them the choice. He's an overachiever. We provided them the choice to attend this evening so they could wrap things up and be prepared for our students tomorrow morning. So we are anticipating, as we progress into September, because enrollment will move through the first part of the school year to be at around 14,689. When I checked earlier this afternoon, we were already above the 14,500 mark. So again, that number will continue to move all the way up beyond Labor Day, actually. Another piece I'd like to touch on in my update is safety. We, as a district, well, TEA is requiring every school district in the state of Texas to take seven identified action steps and be able to report or confirm that they have done those things to the agency. Agency will put out a survey beginning September 1, and you have through September 9 to submit that. We will have all those things taken care of, identified as far as TEA action steps, and be ready to report accordingly when survey opens on September 1. We also are adding a new position, and this is on our agenda for later this evening, for consideration of approval by the Board, a Coordinator of Safety and Risk Management. Safety has always been handled by our Executive Director of Facilities, Mr. John Hall. In addition to a multitude of other tasks and responsibilities he has, the addition of this position will allow us to have much more focus on the processes and procedures we use throughout the school district to ensure the safest environment possible at our campuses. In addition to this, you've also seen a workshop, as well as the public hearing on the budget earlier, that we have added two additional school resource deputies to the budget to go with the seven we already have in place at the school district. And also, I've mentioned this in the past as well, but if the Board recalls, in our November 21 bond, we had around $2.3 million for safety and security items identified. Through the course of this fall, you'll have some of those items coming to you for consideration of funding. A vast majority of that will be to harden our entry points at our campuses throughout the school district. So all those things are occurring as we get situated for the start of the school year. Construction update. And if you make sure and keep an eye on Transmittal and those types of things, you'll see updated photos. But we have completed the renovations, Phase 1 renovations, Southwood Valley Elementary School, and it's absolutely wonderful. If you want a live look at that and have not been able to make it out, we will be broadcasting. Our KBTX will be doing interviews with CSISD at Southwood Valley Elementary School beginning at 5:00 a.m. in the morning. So I think I have the 5:00 a.m. segment. Mr. Glenwinkle has the 5:30 half hour. Mr. Luna has the 6:00 a.m. half hour, and Dr. Perry gets 6:30. Why Dr. Perry gets to sleep in, I'm not sure. I'm thinking maybe she goes 5:00 a.m. and I go 6:30, but we'll see. But they'll be broadcasting or doing those interviews from Southwood Valley Elementary School, and that first phase of renovations is absolutely beautiful. And we'll do the second phase of that next summer. Also this summer, and completed and ready to go for school tomorrow, our student restroom renovations at A&amp;M Consolidated High School, as well as several faculty restrooms. Those are amazing transformation as well. The canopies for our CTE departments behind each of our comprehensive high schools are going up, and that will expand our outdoor workspace. But you can see each of those going up right now. Anticipate those to be completed by the end of this month. And again, in the planning or design phase of Phase 1 of our CTE center, we will, the location of that, I've been asked on several occasions, we are planning or doing the design phase, and so we're placing that facility at the 90 acres we currently own over at the TEA of Capstone and Dowling. So that is where we are moving forward or planning to begin construction of that facility. Construction, we anticipate, starting toward the end of this fall semester, end of the year. Also a reminder, next week, the 25th, is our eligible employees or returning employees will receive the first of their two retention payments, $1,000. There'll be two $1,000 payments, a total of two for our teachers. The first one, again, is August 25th. All others will receive a $500 payment this fall. I mentioned KBTX tomorrow morning. Again, first day of school tomorrow. Reminder to the Board, next Thursday, August 25th, we have Team of Eight training that begins at 5:00. You'll check your email and Transmittal for additional details for that. Mr. Horak?
All right. That'll bring us to Item E, Hearing of Citizens. We have none. Bring us to Item F, Consent Agenda. Those items will be Item G, Item H2, H3, H4, I2, J6 through J11, J12, and J13.
Mr. Horak, I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall, a second by Ms. McAdams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. That will bring us to Item H1, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Regarding Annual Approval of the MOU with the Texas A&amp;M University Hotel and Conference Center. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Ms. Horak. Board members, with additional details on this agenda item, we have our Executive Director of Secondary Education, Ms. Tiffany Parkinson.
Good evening, Mr. Martindale, Mr. Horak, and the rest of the board. While you just approved two other memorandums of understanding regarding other community partnerships, we wanted to highlight this one in particular tonight because this is a new partnership between the Texas A&amp;M University Hotel and Conference Center and a program that is new at College View High School, our hotel and resort management program, which we have 21 students slated to begin tomorrow in this program as part of the collegiate, sorry, career in readiness.
I messed it all up.
I need a slide. This is my first item that doesn't have a slide, and I was nervous about it, and I wrote too much on my paper. So this is in the Career and Industry Academy of College View High School. And once again, those 21 students will begin tomorrow. They are slated to begin working onsite through their internship rotations at the conference center on September 15. So they'll have about four weeks of classroom instruction with Chrissy Wallace, our teacher at College View, before we send them out to their work-based learning opportunity. And so it is an exciting partnership. We've worked very closely with Greg Stafford, who is the general manager there, as well as Lauren Pierce, their Director of Human Resources, to make sure that we are choosing internship experiences that are developmentally appropriate and safe for our students. And so special thanks as well to Kevin Ross, our Director of CTE, for really working hard on this partnership and opportunity for our students. I foresee that this will be the first of many as we expand our internships and work-based learning, both at College View and also at both comprehensive high schools moving forward. So we ask that you approve our partnership through this MOU with the Texas A&amp;M Hotel and Conference Center this evening.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Texas A&amp;M Hotel and Conference Center and College Station ISD as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ben. We have a second by Mr. Hall. Any discussion?
I just want to say, I think this is really cool. I'm excited, like, really excited about this, and the other two memorandums that we were able to approve as well and continue. I'm excited for the kids to have these opportunities and everything, all the work that's gone into it.
Yes, the same. I'm really excited about all three of them. The two that we work out, we work with kind of the industry partners are kind of some exactly what we were hoping to do when we put this in the strategic design, right? And then I also just want to continue to say, I am a big supporter of what we do coordinating with Bryan for their Career and Technology Center as well. I mean, it's an efficient use of our funds, you know, across both districts, and I think it's great that we can partner with them on that one as well. So I'm excited about adding this new one to the list.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Ms. Parkinson.
Thank you.
That will bring us to Item I1, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Regarding New Administrator Contracts. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. And Board members, we have two administrative contracts we're recommending to you this evening for approval. The first is Ms. Patty Ayala for Director of Special Programs. Patty has served as Assistant Principal at College Station High School since 2017. Prior to that, she was an administrator or a high school associate principal, a middle school and elementary school assistant principal, and elementary school principal in Mansfield ISD, and was a bilingual educator prior to moving into administrative roles. The second administrative contract that we're recommending is Mr. Tracy McLendon for Coordinator of Safety and Risk Management. Tracy has served in the same role as Safety and Risk Management Coordinator for Bryan ISD for the past six years. Prior to that, she was Workers' Comp Case Manager for Baylor Scott &amp; White System. So, Mr. Horak, and Board members, we have those two administrative contracts for your consideration this evening.
I move that we approve the new administrator contracts as presented.
I'll second.
We have a first, a motion by Ms. McAdams, second by Mr. Ben. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Welcome and congratulations.
Patty, any introductions? Do you have some guests with you this evening? You don't have to. I mean, if you don't want to introduce, no, okay.
Yeah, I brought my daughters, and so my oldest daughter, Stella, and my youngest daughter, Alexa, are here with me tonight.
Very good. Thank you and welcome. Tracy, we're going to have talked to you already about the company you're keeping sitting next to Mr. Simak back there. But no, Tracy, welcome aboard. We're excited to have you in this new role with College Station ISD. Very good. Thank you.
All right, that'll bring us to IJ, the fun part of our Board Meeting for August. Here we go. J1, Consider Approval of the School District Budget for the General Fund, Debt Service Fund, and Child Nutrition Fund for the fiscal year ending August 31, 2023. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Ms. Horak, and Board members, for the final lap of the evening, I guess. For the third time with the budget, our CFO, Sammy Dross.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. You're right, third time tonight, all on the same topic, so. So tonight on your agenda is the proposed budget for '22-'23. So I'll go over just a few of the highlights before we open it up for any questions you might have and for a vote. But the enrollment that the General Fund is built upon is 14,689, an average daily attendance of 13,725. That's about a 95% attendance rate, so a little better than last year. As we all know, attendance since the pandemic has not been where it has been before, but so it's better than last year, but a little less than pre-pandemic rates. So we're trying to be a little bit conservative. And property value growth, net of the $15,000 additional homestead exemption that passed in May, of 10.726%. So the tax rate that the proposed budget for the General Fund is built upon is called what we call the compressed rate, or the voter-approved tax rate, of 88.51 cents. That is down from its current rate of 95.22 cents. The debt service is held constant at 26.3 cents. So that's a total tax rate for the proposed budget of $1,1481, or a 6.71 cent decline from last year's rate. So as mentioned, there's three required funds for you to adopt the budget on. That's the General Fund, the Debt Service Fund, and the Child Nutrition Fund. So the General Fund is the only one of the three that is not a balanced budget as proposed with revenue of $130,763,894 and appropriations of $132,278,170. So that's 1,514,276 appropriations exceeding revenue. Both debt service and child nutrition are a balanced budget. So you can see the total proposed budget of $169,070,430 on revenue and then appropriations So just a brief summary of the additions that are in the General Fund budget. That is Compensation Plan A that was approved in June that increases the beginning teacher pay to $47,725 and provides a 2% increase for all other employment groups. We have some additional special education positions. We've increased the CTE budget due to program growth and required spend levels. Two additional school resource deputies and inflation items, the largest being fuel, property and casualty insurance, the appraisal district, and some various other contracts, including that school resource deputy one as well. And then along with student growth, there are some other miscellaneous supplies and expenses to accommodate that growth in the General Fund budget. So one of the requirements is that you adopt the budget on the function level. So you've got a couple of things that were attached to the agenda. One is the proposed budget that is at the function level. It also includes some accompanying notes to that budget, as well as the required addition of the computation and the calculations for determining our tax rates. That is new, and it's attached to the budget. So those were actually being asked to adopt. You also have some supplementary information that just goes into a little bit more detail on the budget, but that's just for information only and not part of the adoption. So that is the budget that we're asking for you to adopt tonight. So I'll entertain any questions you might have.
I move to approve the proposed College Station ISD budget for the General Fund, Debt Service Fund, Child Nutrition Fund for the 2022-23 fiscal year.
I'll second.
We have a first by Mr. Hall, second by Ms. Nolan. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. I believe you're staying there, Ms. Ross.
I'm staying here.
You'll be here for a little bit.
Yeah.
J2, Consider Approval of a Resolution Adopting the 2022 Tax Rate for the 2022-23 Fiscal Year. Mr. Martindale.
Yes, sir, Mr. Horak. We've adopted a budget now. We need a tax rate to go with it. I will make note, and I know Ms. Dross is going to go over this in a little more detail, but when the Board considers this, if and when a recommendation on this item is made, I believe she needs exact language as proposed in the supporting memo. So just a note to you as you consider this item. So with more on the proposed tax rate, Ms. Dross.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. So we just talked about the proposed budget, so now it's the proposed tax rate. So the tax rate that we are recommending tonight is 3 cents higher than what was used in the proposed budget while ago. So the proposed tax rate is 91.51 cents for maintenance and operations or the General Fund, and 26.3 cents, or the same it was last year, for debt service. So a total of $1,1781 per $100 of valuation, so that's both. So the, I'm sorry, and there's a slide that kind of shows that difference. So the resolution that sets this tax rate has got some very specific language, one of them being, after we make some calculations, it says, in all caps, "This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate," which is true. So even though it is a decline due to property value growth and other things, it is going to collect more taxes. So that is required to be on that resolution, and again, if you so approve, specific language as well. So just a visual, again, you've seen this before. So the blue arrow is the tax rate that was used, the M&amp;O side, for the adopted budget that just passed. And the right on the green is the actual proposed tax rate. So the additional revenue that would be generated with this proposed tax rate is estimated to be $3.3 million in property tax revenues and an additional $1.715,431 in state revenue. So the state will still contribute state funds on these 3 cents, but if we were to go up one more on a 4th cent, there would be no additional state revenue. So we'll be maximizing our state revenue with this particular tax rate. And if approved, these are estimated to fund additional compensation that we called Compensation Plan B back in June, as well as balance the budget.
I have a quick question. So if we don't do this proposed tax rate, the state does not contribute extra?
Not any more than what we already have. So they are contributing on the tax rate that we have right now, but basically, there's still some state money left on the table because we're not taxing the rate we have. We have three additional pennies.
So the state only kicks in more, they'll kick in the 1.7 if we do the 3.3?
Correct.
Okay.
Got it. So in summary, Compensation Plan B that Board of Trustees approved, depending upon this tax rate adoption tonight, would put beginning teacher would put beginning teacher pay at $49,600, would also provide an additional 4% to the current base pay for teachers, librarians, and registered nurses, 4% for the other professional clerical and auxiliary pay groups, and 2% for administrators. So this plan, based on the resolution that was approved previously, would go into effect with this tax rate if it passes on the very next item that we're going to talk about as well.
I have a question about the, you mentioned we're still paying the county appraisal district. Does a county or city, are they subject to any kind of compression based on the growth rate?
I can't speak for them. I do know that one of those entities, I believe it's the county, is limited somewhat on their growth, but I can't speak to exactly how much on those.
I think the city's 3.5%. I believe.
So again, at this resolution, if you so accept it and approve it, there is some specific motion language that I ask that be utilized that's listed. You ready? I'll give it a try.
I was practicing, but go ahead.
Yeah. Go for it, Darren, you go for it, go for it.
I was going to change the numbers if we read it differently.
There's millions and not that. All right, here we go. I move that the property tax rate be approved by the way of the attached resolution for a total tax rate of $117,81, of which 91.51 cents for maintenance and operations and 26.3 cents for debt service.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. McAdams. We have a second by Mr. Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. That will bring us to item J3. Consideration and possible approval of an order calling a voter-approved tax rate election to be held by the College Station Independent School District on November 8th, 2022. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horack. Since the prior item, the tax rate approved exceeds the compressed tax rate, then we would need to take action to call a voter-approved tax rate election to approve this tax rate that exceeded the compressed rate by 3 cents, but it's still a 3.7 cent drop from current. With additional information, Ms. Dras.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. I also have Mr. Jeff Goldbus here. He's our bond counsel. If you have any detailed questions, he can help with those. He's helped put this order together for us. But as mentioned, this particular proposed tax rate, being exceeding that compressed rate or the voter-approved rate, would require a tax rate election that will be held on November 8th with early voting starting October 24th. But again, I think that says about the same thing. So I want to, it's kind of skipped to the ballot language that's listed in this particular order. And it requires very specific language. It says that we'll be ratifying an ad valorem tax rate of $117,81 per $100 of valuation in College Station ISD for the current year, a rate that will result in an increase of 6.07%. And we did verify we can take that percent off and not be redundant there in maintenance and operations tax revenue for the district for the current year as compared to the preceding year, which is an additional $6,519,285. So I wanted to spend just a minute explaining that before we turn it over to some of the other legal type things in the order. But that is different than the additional revenue that we just talked about in the proposed tax rate. The reason is, is that proposed tax rate is the additional revenue we would generate in the proposed budget. So that is from that compressed rate on our values that we have for 2022-23, that additional 3 cents. And it is state and property taxes. This particular one calculation is looking at the property tax revenue from 21-22 to 22-23, tax revenue only. So not only is it the 3 cents, it also accounts for that 2.5% of property value growth that we are allowed before we have to compress our tax rate. So that's kind of in summary of why the numbers are different, but it is what's required in the ballot language. So a little confusing. And again, if approved, there is some specific motion language that we ask that you use tonight.
So why is it that we have to do that? Let's start with that.
Do which?
Why is it that we have to, for a 2022 TRE, but election, sorry, why do we have to include 21 percentages? Because that's what we're doing, right? Including 21 percentages with the 22 percentage, correct?
That's correct.
So why?
Very good question. And I'm going to answer that, but I did, well, Ms. Dras did an exceptional job of explaining it. House Bill 3 gave us this language. And the statute says the ballot shall read as follows. And when the legislature says shall read, there is no deviation. We have explored with other school districts modifiers, clarifiers, and we've been told consistently by the Attorney General's office, no modifications, no qualifiers. This is not unlike last year when we had to wrestle with the, this is a property tax increase that school districts are now required to put on their ballots. Now, to answer your question, when House Bill 3 came out, the focus on that was, it was a cap on property value growth. And so many of the instruments that came out of House Bill 3 dealt with year after year appraisal creep and total value growth. And what they did is they borrowed from the way the municipalities and the counties have been limited on how much growth they're allowed to take advantage of every year. School districts previously didn't really have that. So the focus became, we're going to let you use your prior year values. We'll let you keep a little bit of growth you got in the following year. And that is the framework for House Bill 3. It is very imperfect.
But see, I would argue with you, Mr. Goldbus, just for the sake of...
Please.
While school districts were not capped like municipalities, they were in essence capped through the recapture mechanism.
And your tax rate. That's right. That's right. But they sort of took the system that the cities had and now put it on y'all.
Is this where I get to ask how, what are our limitations in talking about this with the public? Is this where I get to ask those questions?
Sure. Now, we're going to have a sit-down, an executive, to discuss some of those things in detail here later. You're welcome to ask whatever questions you feel the need to now, Ms. Nolan. And I know Mr. Goldbus will direct us down the appropriate path.
Well, I've had different groups ask me what they can do, right? Like, teachers are concerned about what they're, if we pass this or if we approve this tonight, right? Teachers are wondering what they can do. Other community members that are not involved with the district are wondering what they can do. Students are wondering what they can do. I mean, at a senior that is interested in having the school paper write an article about it, is that type of stuff allowed? I know there are limitations, and that's what I'm getting at.
Freedom of speech is alive and well. We have some direction as far as an informational email that we will send to employees, like probably tomorrow, similar to the same one we sent them regarding how they manage themselves with bonds. Basically, anyone in the community, including students, can speak to it as they so choose. Employees are limited during their work hours and they cannot utilize school resources to share their opinion one way or the other. Now, outside of their work hours, they are a taxpayer and a citizen and can articulate how they so choose regarding those items. Mr. Goldbus, correct me if I'm wrong on any of that.
There's nothing to correct.
They can distribute information how they so choose outside of their work hours and not utilizing school ISD resources. In other words, their email, whatever the case may be. If they choose to put something on social media advocating one way or the other, they absolutely have that right, as long as they don't do it while they're during work hours. So folks do not lose their freedom to opinion or speech. Employees are limited to their times regarding work and the resources they use to distribute that opinion.
Makes sense.
Students can write about it all they want. Other taxpayers in the community can do whatever they so please. We have no control over that component and don't wish to.
Very true. Thank you.
So as I'm not a CSISD employee, I'm an elected official. I feel obligated to explain to the voters my logic about why my logic behind my voting decision on this TRE. Frankly, I would not put forward an item and I would not vote for an item onto a ballot that I did not believe was in the best interest of the district and our tax dollars. The TRE is one proposed solution to address an issue that was brought before this board by Mr. Martindale months ago. How do we recruit and retain talented professional educators? And objectively, as the numbers show, the performance of our students, as we discussed in the workshop, and the compensation of the teachers who educate our students are not matched. The TRE will present to the voters a chance to allow CSISD to maintain a market-competitive pay schedule, recognize the superb performance post-COVID, and provide the revenue needed for us to balance the budget. This would be an enduring choice that would impact the performance of our district decades to come. And more than hoping for legislators to helicopter funds in our favor, I trust the CSISD voters will equip us with the resources to maintain the quality of education that drew families like mine to College Station. CSISD is peerless in student success and performance post-COVID. And maintaining student performance, we have maintained student performance because of our teachers' individual efforts and the district's effectiveness after returning from lockdowns. As a member of the Budget Committee, I have seen firsthand and would like to applaud Ms. Oz and Mr. Martindale on how lean and efficient an organization they run. In fact, CSISD has one of the lowest administrative burdens in the state, not of schools our size, in the state. And we have one of the lowest student-teacher ratios and highest student-to-services ratios. Again, not just schools our size, in the state. So bluntly, there is not more money in this lean organization to shift around. The TRE is one way in which the voters can provide CSISD the resources needed as opposed to be subjected to state-mandated tax compression that is kicked in because of the rapid growth of property values driven by the school district and our performance. So what we are asking is that the tax rate, the TRE is asking the voters to move the tax rate from a current 1.21 per $100, as mentioned, down to 1.18 and generate $3.3 million locally to be matched by the 1.7 million state dollars. The TRE is a chance for the CSISD voters to intervene against the automatic state-mandated rules so we decide how and where College Station dollars are spent. And that is my logic and my judgment of why I would vote to put something on the ballot in 2022. Mr. Horack, I move to approve the attached order calling a voter-approved tax rate election to be held on November 8th, 2022.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall, second by Dr. Payne. Any further discussion?
I will just echo pretty much everything that was said right there. I think it was well said and well covered. Obviously, these last three items are all linked together that we've done. And, you know, this is not something that we have taken lightly. We, as a board, have been reviewing this for months. To have a lean budget that comes from our administration, Ms. Dras and your team have worked on this countless hours, I'm sure. But to be able to do what we need to do right now to pay our teachers what they deserve for their hard work, but then also to really remain competitive with other school districts, we need more money to do so. And the way to do that is the VATRE. And I think, really kudos for putting this out there as an option because I do think, you know, like Mrs. Nolan pointed out, it not only will help raise the additional money locally, but it comes with an additional 1.7 million from the state, which we could certainly be happy to gain that as well. So I also am in support of putting this out to the voters and hopefully we'll be able to see that in our budget.
I think, Ms. McAdams, I agree with you. I think the beauty of this is that our voters elect a Board of Trustees and we make decisions and so forth. But in this, you know, we consistently hear, and it's an absolutely valid viewpoint, that property taxes are too high. And we also consistently hear, and it's a very valid viewpoint also, that our teachers and staff are not paid enough. And this, you know, we were going to adopt a budget in one way or the other as a Board of Trustees. And so I don't want this to come across as we're passing the buck, but I think this puts in the hands of the voters of College Station ISD, the property owners, the parents, everyone else, to make this decision as to what is, again, it's kind of diminutive because we're still getting a tax rate decrease anyway. But what's more important? Is it lowering the tax rate, that additional 3 cents? Or is it generating this extra millions of dollars in income and revenue to properly begin to pay our teachers and our staff? And, you know, again, I don't know how much we can advocate one way or the other, but I do like the idea that this is going to give the folks in our community the ability to let their viewpoint be known.
Very well said, all three of you. And I'm just going to add some more. You know, as individuals, we, and I'm talking about the whole community and parents and whatnot, you know, we do our part to support our teachers in all the ways that we can, send them kind notes, you know, help out the schools and whatnot. But I feel like this is a way that our community can come together and show massive support. So please, everyone, educate yourselves, educate your neighbors, educate your friends. And if you have any questions, please reach out to the school district. If the information that we're not sending out is perfectly clear and you have questions, please reach out to somebody so that we can clarify for you, so that you can go make an educated vote on November 8th. And again, just come together as a community and vote this. And let the state give us 1.7 also. That part's huge. I keep harping on it. I think that part is huge, so.
You know, we started this on March 7th. Y'all saw the date. Never did I think we'd be here at this point with this option.
Right.
Because this was a whole lot of Ms. Oz, Mr. Martindale, the team, everybody just brainstorming of, here's where we are, here's what we have, what other options can we go with? We've had a lot of speakers come and visit with us, and it's not that we disagreed with them at all. We understand, we all agree. We've all said it here tonight, pretty much. I mean, we've got to catch up, we've got to pay our teachers. They're working their rear ends off, and we're about to start tomorrow. So this is the way to make that happen and give it an opportunity and obviously put the district in a situation of not being insolvent with their budget and their finances. Because Ms. Dras has already told us, we have another hailstorm? Let's pack it up, folks, because it's going to be a struggle. We know that. We've got money, we've put it away, but we don't need to be dipping into it. And that's what it's there for. And so we've got to be cognizant of the opportunity. And this is that opportunity to let our stakeholders make the call for our teachers and our students. And this is the best opportunity and the best option that we've been able to put together without putting the district in a situation of what happens when the worst happens. So... So, you know, the thing that makes me the most nervous is that language right there. But that's going to be on the school district to make sure that we make sure that that language is clarified and understandable for the layperson, because that, I mean, y'all saw, I asked the first question on it, because I don't like it, but like we were told, that's where we're at. That's what the state tells us we have to do. So that'll be the challenge, if there is one, to put out to the voters, and I'm with you, Ms. Nolan, just educate yourself. Don't go in there blind and read something and look at it the way I am right now and go, oh, my gosh. So we've got a motion by Mr. Hall, like I said, seconded by Dr. Payne. Any further discussion?
I am going to add one other thing, just to say, because I had a very wise ex-Board member say to me this week about, I was saying that this is complicated, it's going to be hard to explain, and they said, it's actually really quite simple, right? It is voting to give our teachers a 4% raise. That's pretty straightforward, so just wanted to add that.
There's nothing further. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. That will take us to item J4, Consider Approval of the Resolution for the Designation of Committed Fund Balance for the Fiscal Year Ending August 31, 2022. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak and Board members. This particular item allows us to make adjustments with committed fund balance to uncommitted status. The way our financial ratings are established is on 75 days of operational cost relative to uncommitted fund balance funds. So with additional information, Ms. Strauss.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. So fund balance, there's actually five classifications of fund balance. The two that we focus on the most are those that we have control of. One is committed fund balance, that is controlled by the Board of Trustees, and then our unassigned fund balance, and that is fund balance that's available for operations. So previously, and this was back in 2011, the Board of Trustees did commit fund balance for some various reasons, mainly construction and construction-related items, as well as land. That was done back in 2011, when focus on fund balance was a little bit different. So now, as we've progressed through, and we look at our financial rating system that wants 75 days of fund balance in that unassigned, so we've had a couple of years where we have dipped into fund balance for operating expenses. So looking at trying to maintain that 75 days, as well as you just heard about the, some extraordinary items that we've had due to hailstorms in 2021, as well as the freeze. So those are things that we did file on insurance, but the expenses are hitting the books this year. So looking at reducing that committed fund balance for the construction and construction-related for those items, that's exactly what it was there for. Because you don't plan on those expenses, we hope they don't occur, but when they do, we need to have the funds with which to do that for. So it's also required that the board, if we do change that committed, that you do so in the manner that it was originally done. So back in 2011, when you committed, it was done by resolution. So I have attached a resolution for you that looks at committing a total of, let me look at the second page, a total of $5 million. That's down from the current 9 million. Looks at reducing that, this for construction and construction-related, mainly for those roof damages that we've had to replace and repair, and land, so that we can have it in that unassigned area and meet that 75-day requirement that they're looking for. So I ask for your approval of a resolution tonight that commits fund balance in the amount of $5 million.
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
A second.
We have a first motion by Mr. Hall, seconded by Ms. Nolan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Brings us to item J5, Consideration to Delegate Contractual Authority to Obligate College Station ISD under Texas Education Code 11.1511(c)(4) to the superintendent for the purpose of obligating the district under TEC 48.257 and TEC Chapter 49 for the 2022-23 school year. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. I think we're going to move Amy's nameplate to the podium. This particular item, just, the Board of Trustees is giving me authority to make our Chapter 49 recapture payments as calculated through the course of the year. With additional information, Ms. Strauss.
Yes, thank you. So TEA has made the determination for the next school year that College Station ISD will be a Chapter 49 district, meaning that based on our property values and our student growth, that we have the potential to have to pay recapture payments to the state. So we have already committed or did an intent for what they call Option 3, which is where we purchase attendance credits from the state. Now, it's real important to know that at this point in the budget process and our estimates, that even though we're designated as a Chapter 49 district, at this point, there is no recapture payments that are budgeted for. Now, that will all depend on, they adjust that state revenue template. If they increase the yield like they did this past year, then we could be in recapture payments, as well as if our enrollment doesn't materialize the way we did. So it could change, and so what you're doing is you're authorizing the superintendent to enter into the agreement and make those payments, should they come about. Again, like some of the other things that we've done tonight, there is some specific motion language that's listed for you if you so approve this delegation to Mr. Martindale. And this one's a little longer than the other ones.
I should have gone earlier, Kim. I move that the Board of Trustees delegate contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code 11.1511(c)(4) to the superintendent solely for the purpose of obligating the district under TEC 48.257 and TEC Chapter 49, some chapters A and D, and the rules adopted by Commissioner of Education authorized under TEC 49.006. This includes approval of the agreement for the purchase of attendance credit or the agreement for the purchase of attendance credit netting Chapter 48 funding.
Second.
We have a first by Dr. Payne, we have a second by Mr. Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. I'm done. Thanks.
That will bring us to item L, Executive Session. L1, the Board will meet in executive session to conduct a closed meeting to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, because a deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the district in negotiations with a third party. L2, the Board will meet in executive session to consult with its attorney regarding voter-approved tax ratification election procedures. And L3, the Board will meet in executive session to discuss superintendent contract. We'll see y'all when we get back. All right, we are back in open session at 9:16. In regards to item L3, the Board will meet in executive session to discuss the superintendent contract. Upon further discussion, we have every intent to extend.
Mr. Horak, this is agenda item M1. M1, we're back in open session.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. M1, open session. Yes, consideration, discussion, possible action related to superintendent contract. We, after deliberation, we have every intent to extend Mr. Martindale's contract another year. However, upon review and some further research that we have requested, we will be discussing this in executive session during the September board meeting, and that will bring us to adjournment.